We look at general fund budget status report and we start on the revenue side. Again, nothing's out of the ordinary with the revenue side of the budget status report. Local taxes were starting to come in and we will know this will be October or November, December. You will see the local tax revenue jump really high. So everything's coming in as predicted. So year-to-date revenues received thus far is a little bit more than 14.6 million. On the expenditure side, there's nothing out of the ordinary there. Expenditures year-to-date is a little bit more than $17 million. And so currently our expenditures are about $2.3 million more than our revenue. But we can, that's going to adjust once we get into November, December because the local taxes are going to start holding the revenue there. So again, nothing's out of the ordinary on the expenditure side. And then last one is the grant budget status report. There's nothing out of the ordinary there. You will see year-to-date expenditures a little bit more than $11.25 there. Revenue is a little bit more than seven. Keep in mind again that we carry our federal programs and seal their con applications are approved and those have been approved. And so when you start drawing down money, you will see that on the budget report. So you will see the revenues for grants, for the grants, revenue coming in and what's drawn at this. Are there any questions about the general fund budget status on the revenue side, expenditure side, or grants?
So can you tell us something about how this is determined?
That is a grant that we received from the state in the amount of $8,000. So y'all say you started signing down.
Yes.
Yeah, I see it there. I'm not sure what those expenditures were for, but I can give that for you and give that information. Any other questions?
I'll turn it over to Ms. Brown. Good evening everyone. We need to be. Teaching and learning is beginning to meet next Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. At 12:30 here at the Batoka Board of Education meeting room. The meeting was opened with an invitation by Dr. Todd Tason. Dr. David Cole, welcome to Teaching and Learning Committee. And introduce the Teaching and Learning Department Directors in attendance. Dr. Cole held a brief discussion of the Batoka City Schools' promotion-retention policy, specifically knowing the mastery of a minimum reading proficiency level fortune. He reminded the committee members that this fortune of the policy, with grade level specific Lexile expectations, had been suspended the past three years due to COVID-19. And that further discussion of this policy is at the board's discretion. Mr. Maxine Whittington presented Batoka High School's indoor course assessment preparation, focusing on the winter and spring testing windows for logistical and procedural considerations, calling for special preparations and training. Ms. Latonya Mitchell presented the Batoka City Schools' mathematics initiative initiatives, grade level specific, tier one curriculum and resources and interventions. Mrs. April Doyle presented the Batoka City Schools' ELA literacy district initiatives, grade level specific, tier one curriculum and resources and interventions. Dr. Alex Alvarez presented the Batoka City Schools' science district initiatives, grade level specific, tier one curriculum and resources. Additionally, Dr. Alvarez presented Batoka City Schools' STEM, ITIC and ADDI initiatives and current program events. Dr. David Cole gave a brief review of the Batoka City Schools' social studies district initiatives, grade level specific, tier one curriculum and resources, and highlighted the integration of social studies within literacy blocks at the K-2 level. Dr. Joyce Dean began a presentation of the updated Batoka City Schools' balanced quartard with FY '22 G-MAT data added, and explained the layout of the data notebook that she provided the Teaching and Learning Committee members. Mrs. Dean asked if the committee would like some time to review the data notebook before engaging in further discussion. The meeting concluded with a follow-up. Teaching and Learning Committee meeting being scheduled for Wednesday, November 16th, to continue the discussion of the balanced quartard data. Thank you.
Ms. Brown. If you all discussed in regards to the meeting with the nation-wide United States about children being similarly in the fourth or they're in seventh maybe in COVID. If you all discussed in regards to years that have been tested in regards to where we are now. Information in regards to what the team is doing. If it's getting to get it up to, possibly how long would that take? Yes. This is the.
Uh local taxes are starting to come in, and we will know this will be October, or November, December, you will see the local tax revenue jump. Really high, so everything's coming in as predicted, so year to date, revenues received thus far is a little bit more than fourteen point six million. On the expenditure side, there's nothing out of the ordinary there. Uh expenditures year to date is a little bit more than seventeen million dollars. And so currently, our expenditures are about two point three billion more than our revenue, but we can, that's going to adjust. Once we get to November, December, because the local taxes are going to start holding the pressure there. So again, nothing's out of the ordinary on the expenditure side. And then last one is the grant budget status report. There's nothing out of the ordinary there, you will see year to date expenditures, a little bit more than eleven point five there. E E revenue is a little bit more than seven, so keep in mind again that we carry our federal programs and seal. Aircon applications are approved and those have been approved, and so we would start drawing down money, and you will see that on the next report. So you will see the revenues uh for grant, for the grants, that will be revenue coming in. And let's draw that. Are there any questions about the general fund budget status on the revenue side, expenditure side, or grants?
So can you tell us something about how this is turning on?
So that, that is a grant that we received from the state, it'd be an amount of, it's something that had eight thousand. Yeah, I see it there, um not sure with those expenditures before, but I can give that for you and give that information. Any other questions?
I'll turn it over to Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown. Teaching and learning is the meeting we met Tuesday, November eighth, two thousand twenty two. At twelve thirty here at the Badawka Board of Education meeting room. The meeting was opened with an invitation by Dr. Todd Casey. Dr. David Cole, welcome to Teaching and Learning Committee. And introduce the Teaching and Learning Department directors in attendance. Dr. Cole held a brief discussion of the Badawka City Schools' promotion retention policy. Specifically knowing the mastery of a minimum reading proficiency level fortune. He reminded the committee members that this fortune of the policy. With grade level specific Lexile expectations. Had been suspended the past three years due to COVID nineteen. And that further discussion of this policy is at the board's discretion. Mr. Maxine Whittington presented Badawka High School in the course assessment preparation. Focusing on the winter and spring testing windows for logistical and procedural considerations. Calling for special preparations and training. Ms. Latony Mitchell presented the Badawka City Schools' mathematics initiative initiatives. Grade level specific tier one curriculum and resources and interventions. Mrs. April Doyle presented the Badawka City Schools' E L A literacy district initiatives. Grade level specific tier one curriculum and resources and interventions. Dr. Alex Alvarez presented the Badawka City Schools' science district initiatives. Grade level specific tier one curriculum and resources. Additionally, Dr. Alvarez presented Badawka City Schools' STEM, IFIT, and ADD. Initiatives and current program events. Dr. David Cole gave a brief review of the Badawka City Schools' social studies district team initiatives. Grade level specific tier one curriculum and resources. And highlighted the integration of social studies within literacy blocks at the K two level. Dr. Joyce Dean. Began a presentation of the updated Badawka City Schools' balanced quartet. With F Y twenty two G M A D data added. And explained the layout of the data notebook that she provided the Teaching and Learning Committee members. Mrs. Dean asked if the committee would like some time to review the data notebook before engaging in further discussion. The meeting concluded with a follow up. Teaching and Learning Committee meeting being scheduled for Wednesday, November sixteenth. To continue the discussion of the balanced quartet there, thank you.
Ms. Brown, if you all discuss in regards to the. In a meeting with the nation wide United States about children being. Uh similarly in the fourth, I think in the seventh, maybe in the eighth grade. Uh if you all discuss in regards to. Years that have been tested in regards to where we are now. Information in regards to what. The team is doing. It's just getting it up to. For the need to be. And possibly how long would that, would that take to reach? This is the work that they visit. I'm sure when you're looking at the past, it's still your seventy. Another two years occurred. Yes, but what, what do we have, what mechanism we have in place? We're working on bringing these kids up to. And at least a number of. That should be returned all of them.
There was some discussion, but I was. Um Mason, can you put that through me?
Yes, sir, we, we did our E L A, uh quickly directly share the initiatives that we're using. Um to both those gaps, we just want to be. Like we referred to it, the make assessment, for students in fourth grade, explain what shows connection. Both caused a considerable depression. And so the initiative that we've been putting in place, we'll continue some initiative that we started last year. We've also added some initiatives like accelerated reader. If you allow our students to read more, often we be assessed on their reading. On fire, I mean on the sixteen. They will read data, they can call benchmark data. They assess all children who did it on here. And then this, uh this week, I think this week, we are real speaking with subject assessment, uh reading. And to our audiences, so concerning the duration of our progress. But the initiative that we believe those bonds of our progress, you know, the sixteen, we'll share that data with. Um the teaching and learning community and the board. Each of you have a copy of the notebook, those outlines, all the reports that were discussed today. As also was discussed today, you know, that, that closure of those gaps do not happen overnight, so we'll have some time. So the research says that it usually takes two years to, we'll try to improve those having the poor teacher. And so if you think about where we are, COVID, you have two years of COVID, so you're talking about a little three year. Time frame to close those gaps and just to, but thankfully, we're seeing progress. And our recent data that we're going to share with system. So our kids are receiving, they're growing. We just want to grow at a faster pace, but we're still doing, we're having discussions.
Students that see them. Where the other kids are not, we don't have a plan, Charles feels not, not our full. A master, a podmaster, with areas that we need to be, you know, to see that say.
Yes, yes, sir, we, we had that discussion, you know, we talked about our people program, our STEM program. Accelerating those students providing out those who are. Game of schedule, dividing up to between the new along end of year one, if they are accelerating. And so teacher will work with those who is just assigned to those who are in the remediation. So we don't want to leave anyone behind, or we do have gaps, the sort of gaps that we like to close, the whole piece of our game of. Schedule, we offer by these things to accelerate.
I think our management, you know, the new ones for the case of you. Have we made a direct opportunity more, looking more at a more parallel approach to how we're. Teaching for fifth graders. As far as getting them ready for middle schools, as I mentioned before. You know, I, I get their house with elementary schools, but for the fifth graders. It's not the same as for second grader. Their approach to teaching them, prepare them for the middle school. They need more than just memorizing facts and refer to take them back, they need to be able to middle school to. Take those facts and apply those facts and build on those facts.
Yes, what, what you referring to is very aligned, so we are having those discussions as well. We have not been very tense, been very honest, we haven't done. It's something that I share with, like if you had a good meeting, that you have to do a better job of that. Just find the time for those teachers to get together, you know, that happens in the summer. But we're so focused on those individual grades, putting the two grade levels together, because in just. Instead of just fifth and sixth, you're also being six and seven, seven and eight, and then eight and nine is great. But those are the two grade, eight and nine, oftentimes the. Being former child, a mind brain, it's a good job to. So across the board, we feel part of them. Hope not amazed, it's our director of our programs has said, and we'll find she brought her entire.
Good day, Bill, Badawka, that. Well, body agree. Yeah, great. Uh Fato. Here, and the board is Dr. Casey. Each year I come and present to the board and give you just the, the blanket. Facts about our department, I mean, since we have regulation rating, et cetera. Ever this year, I wanted to come and show you who the people are behind me. And that's just some of the people I see. So we're located right behind Dr. Casey's office, right here, in fact, we also share that office with social work as well. Um they kind of moved out of the building and they. Funny lately, but we still love, of course, after they're not there. You know, so I don't, I don't get to see them like I used to, um but we do have, um. If you look on the front of the flyer, we have as of October fourth, which is our last, our empty count. We have one thousand two hundred and fifty one um P E C students, that number, um this is an eight year job, that number has not changed much. It's like fourteen percent of our students, our students. Um that's like fourteen percent of our students um here in Badawka City, and that is along with our state average. State average for H W D students is about fourteen, around twelve, fourteen percent. So we are um around the same average as everywhere, one else in the state. We also have, um, we are a part of District Seventeen, and that is um Laos, Van Hill, Irwin, the here. Uh Brooks, Tiff, and Hopper. So that, that is our district, and we meet with them, um the directors go to Risa once a month, and we leave them in it. And that's our collaboration time, where we still ideas to each other, you know, what are you doing for this, what are you doing for that? Um Dane Heard is the director there, and Wes Taylor is the executive director. Also have a deputy liaison, her name is Amanda Taylor, and she had, she's available for, to me for those tough questions that I get. Um sometimes um good things that happen in the district for our SWD students that have happened before. And that's almost every day, or every other day, so I get to talk to her um a lot. So um without any further ado, I'm going to tell you who, who our team is, and that one hundred and one. Um certified paid for teachers in the district, and we have over fifty parent professionals. Those are the people who have the booth on the ground in our, on the ground in our school. Um so they are too trained and certified to um support all of our um abilities. We got it go from speech only all the way to the thematic brain, um a thematic brain entry. We also serve a part of that, which is our, um which is um residential right here in the middle of our city. And all of those students come to Badawka City as well, from three to twenty one, serve those students. When they turn twenty two, the day that they turn twenty two, they actually um will finish up at the end of that semester. So if a child turns twenty two in September and December, then that they um right, they can graduate that year. Um and help them get jobs or, or whatever the parents need from us. Um so I will start with my pre-K department, they sit right here in the front. So these um beautiful ladies right here, we serve pre-K, when I say pre-K, that means our three year olds, so child fine, that means that we. If a child goes to the doctor and, and the doctor sees that they have, they're having some delays, then they send them to us. And then we test them and we start serving them at age three, so these two, like, well, there's one more missing. Um we serve uh fourteen community sites, it, it can get up to twenty five sometimes. So um if you see spare pre-K on the back, we serve seventy five students, that is seventy five spare pre-K students in Badawka City. And in those two classrooms, fifty one of them are in the classroom, the other ones are in the community, and we have to go to them. So they are driving around all day, serving those kids in the community. Um we have two classrooms, and so those fifty one kids, they go to school either two or three days per week. And then they go back to their respective school, so we may have kids in Lomax or South Mulholland or um that come to. Prime, they'll get their services and then they go back to school. So that is, um Gina Bronson is our pre-K coordinator. And she is, she tests all those students out there um in the community that we get, and we get them all the time. We get them from um daycares as well, as well as babies can't wait, and that's um from doctors offices as well. So um and um we also serve private school students, we serve four private school students right now in the office. Yes, we do serve private school students, if your private school is located in your district, they have the right to get any evaluation at Badawka City. As well as get services if they would like to, and so we have, sometimes that changes, it goes up and down, so right now we serve four private school students and three homeschools. Homeschool students weekly, they actually come to us, some of them are virtual, and we serve those virtual as well, and Hospital Home Val is Tiffany Lampkin. She's back there in the back, so she um serves those students as well. Um those numbers fluctuate sometimes, um when parents find out that they can't get services than they want, that we work um very closely, closely with St. John. Um and um Crossroads. Uh also, we have in that office Tina Smith, Katina Smith, she's our case manager and parent mentor. She's the one that is running around town trying to get um signatures for us where we can't, um where the parents can't come to us. Um uniforms, jackets, socks, whatever the kids need, um she's, she's out there uh getting it for us. Um when we ask where she is, which she was saying, going out there in those streets. So she'll be gone for a long time and then she'll, but she gets the job done. Go on down the hallway, we got compliance coordinators, four of them, I think it's two of them here tonight. Um compliance coordinators work with, um each work with three schools except for Lisa Sharper, she works with the high school. They are directly there to support the school, they read all of the I E Ps to make sure they're compliant. So that's one thousand two hundred and fifty one I E Ps times probably three. Because every time they have a meeting, they have to read that I E P. Um and make sure that it's compliant before it's uploaded, so we need, so you um. Um Miss Todd has been acting up in the, in the room, and we got to put some additional strategies in place. And so we got to have a meeting, if we have a meeting, that's another I E P they need, they have to read, so it's four of those. People that read those I E Ps for us on a daily basis, participate in I E P meetings, um in related services as well. School psychologists. We're going to have one school psychologist here tonight, that's Blake Ruth, oh, two, sorry, two of them, I'm sorry, um AK, AK is, we call her AK, but her name is Ashlyn Kate. Um and uh Blake is here tonight as well, uh we have one more, school psychology is the. Job that everybody should want right now, because we do not have any in South Georgia, it is hard to find, we were blessed to find um Ashlyn. Because um it is hard to find school psychologists right now, because Badawka State does not have that program anymore. And so um most of the people that um. Go to school psychology, they usually migrate to another city or um, well, Atlanta, the Atlanta area in their state. So it's kind of hard, I know a lot of people are using um President's Learning, which they are doing some evaluations online. But I just don't want to go that way, so we are still, um we still have our three psychologists, they are maxed out. Um for sure, um they do about seventy five evaluations per year, and um we had about two hundred evaluations in twenty one, twenty two. Eighty three of those evaluations were parent requests, that is the first time that that's ever happened in the job, and since I've been in the job. And that's due to COVID and our students that are um, that had that two year gap, and so the parents are seeing like a um. Of course, they're seeing their grades differently, they're seeing their Lexile differently, so they, that worries them, and so they like, okay, let's get an evaluation. So when their parent requests an evaluation according to um I D A law, we have to do that evaluation. Right now, last year, we only had eighty three, I mean, not only, because that's a lot, we had eighty three, but now we are just at the beginning of November, and we already have. So um Dr. K, as Dr. Casey said, with teaching and learning, we're working really hard to try to um. To work with tier one, tier two, and tier three, so we can let the parents know that we are trying to close those gaps. And um hopefully, um the evaluation parent request will stop. Um administration, our front office, these are smiling faces that you see when you walk in the door, that's LaConne Felton. Ms. Clara Orr, and um, and I have a two, I have two point five secretaries, um um Somaj Arnold, she is part time. They, they do trans, Ms. Clara does transportation, she works with the ten bus drivers at transportation. And twenty monitors, we have ten bus drivers and twenty monitors that run all day. And they run all day because our pre-K students, some of them only go half day, so they have to be picked up and taken, and then we have some kids at Horizon who only go half day. And so they have to be picked up as well, so our spare buses run all day long. Ms. Clara is a transportation guru, when she's not there, they ask me a question, and I say, I don't know, Ms. Clara's not here. Let me see if I can find her notebook and look in there, so she is the one that takes care of transportation for us. Ms. Felton does um purchase orders, and we upload all of our I E Ps now. We, we just moved our twenty filing cabinets to date from out of the office, we went, um, we actually went electronic. We have sent our um records to a company that's going to upload all of them for us, and they will have, we can just type in a name, and we can just find those records. And that takes care of all of the paper, or anything that is, if anything was happening in our office. Um and the records were to get destroyed, that was always my um fear. So now those records are gone, and they are housed inside of um a platform. Mark Prane, I take I, who made this great flyer for y'all. He um, he's actually um headed up that for me, and he stays on them and, and makes sure that everything is, is right. It's um really hard for me to do, really hard for me to let go of those records and go electronic, Mark has been asking me to do it for about five years. And I say no every year, but I said yes this year, and it has been great, and so now what we do, we go I E P, which is our online um platform for our I E Ps. They um are up. It talks to Georgia D O E, so a lot of the things that we used to have to turn in to the D O E. We don't have to do that anymore, because they could just go into the, that platform and look for it, or they can just say, hey, um, we're looking at this, or we're looking at that. I used to have to print out, say they want thirty I E Ps, we had to print them out and send them up there to the D O E. Because we were doing our I E Ps in the campus, but now we don't have to do that. Um so that has also been a plus for us. Uh my, the, the next department would be our O T and P T. O T and P T, our, our occupational therapy and physical therapy, they see over a hundred and fifty students in the district. Um receive those services, and so they are all over the place every day. Um seeing students, seeing students, all right, so you may see them walking down hall with a student that may have um, um, you know, walking with a cane, or some kids that have braces. On their feet or handwriting, uh it can, it can go a lot of stuff. Uh that's not my expertise, so I'm, I'm going to let them handle that, but they see a over a hundred and fifty people, um students every day. Our team behavior specialists, they call them the dream team, we have two behavior specialists here, Cheryl and um, Adeline Massey, and Cheryl Rice. Um they are phenomenal, they are the only ones in our department that work with both um special ed and regular ed students. So they work with teachers and with students. Um a fun fact about them this year, um Head Start reached out to me in Badawka and asked that we provide them with some. Behavior strategies, because they were seeing a lot of um behaviors in the, in their centers, and so we, and I talked to them, and they were like, okay, yeah, let's do it. So they end up doing not only Badawka, but a whole, all of the surrounding areas, Tipton, Motry, everybody came just. For those four behavior specialists who gave them that, um, that gave them those, trained them in those strategies for behavior. They ended up training over a hundred teachers at the beginning of the year, they are awesome. Um, who am I leaving off? Did I get everything though? So if you, if you look at the bottoms down here, these are, this is an analysis of our teachers in the district. Um, fifty-five percent of them have master's degree. Um, seven percent of them have doctor's degrees. Twenty-two percent has bachelor's degrees and sixteen percent has, um, a specialist's degree. Um, we have some great teachers in the district. Our spare teachers are awesome. They work very, very hard. Um, the paperwork is, um, a lot and, and I know this a lot. So, um, I make sure that I try to appreciate them often to let them know that I appreciate them. We have four interpreters in the district. That is also, um, never happened before. I've only had two, but we have five this year. One of them, um, we ended up losing one of them. But we have four interpreters. We have one vision teacher and we have two hearing teachers, um, that work with our students. We also work very closely with Horizon. They moved to our campus two years ago. Um, Dr. Clemens has been awesome. Um, they are doing a great job out there, um, at that building and building. And hopefully, um, they'll be able to stay there. Uh, transfer students this year alone, we've had a hundred and fifty transfer students, um, to come in just, and that number was as of October for that was MTE. So I know it's been a whole, whole lot more. I haven't checked it. Um, we have had, just a little bit about my department. We, um, we are in a small building. Most of us, not us, but them are two, two in office. And so we have to make sure that, um, we, um, keep our culture up to par because we are in a small building and because our job is so stressful. Um, it is stressful because of the laws that, um, we have to make sure that we're following and make sure that we're compliant. Um, we've had nine babies in eight years. And over ten grand babies in eight years. So we, um, celebrate a lot, but we've also had some tough times together as well. Um, we have started an autism class. We have one autism class. We need another one. Um, however, the, the, um, most important thing about our autism class is to make sure that the right person is in that classroom. And the classroom that we have, the right person is in that classroom right now. So hopefully, um, I have spoken to her about, um, possibly training a second person for an autism class as well. And we have one grade level class and that grade level class is for students that are regular ed, but they may be struggling in the big set, in the co-teaching setting. So they're actually in a small setting. Um, we try to keep that number at a fourteen to fifteen. So it's a teacher in there as well as a parent professional. So it's still, it's a lot of work, um, but we, we're still changing as the students change. We participate in Special Olympics. We also participate in the, um, GVR eight. That is an employment, um, uh, organization that helps job, does job training for our students so that they are ready to transition into, um, the workplace or, um, wherever they'll be going when they leave us. Um, when I was working on my leadership degree, um, it was, a teacher told me two things that I remember. And I remember a lot of stuff about, um, when I was, um, in school. But, um, stand at the door when you, when you teach, when your students come in. Stand at the door when students come in and you're only as strong as your team. And so I am only as strong as my team and I have a strong team. So that means that I am strong. So this is the PC department. Do you have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
Can you tell us more about the autism class?
The autism class is, um, well, we started it last year. And so, um, we, we saw that a lot of kids, we had a lot of kids coming in, um, with autism and they were not, um, suited for Horizon. But, um, they were more suited for the classroom. And so when you have autism, they may have, um, lights, you know, they can't, some of them don't like the sensory, the lights, the, the noise, you know, so if you visit, if you have a chance, go to primary and visit the classroom, it's, it's amazing. We have, um, Russell Harvey is the one that, um, was the leader of, um, who did a sensory room. And so it's like amazing, has amazing, um, pitch tank, you know, all of the, um, bubbles. It's just, um, uh, and it, they feel comfortable in there and so they, they're learning. And it's just because they're not in that big space. Um, and so we, we have probably ten in there right now, but we probably need ten more. You know, and, and it's just because we, we just see a lot of students coming in that need that service. But again, as I said earlier, we, um, it's about having the right person in that room as well. But they have one teacher in there and two parent professionals.
Do you have any more comments or questions?
Y'all come and visit anytime you would like. Thank you, Mr. Piri, for coming over there and bringing them chocolate covered cookies. And, um, so anytime you wanna come by, just come, come by and see us, please. You have more questions? Oh, the second flyer I gave you was our child find flyer, the small one. That is a flyer that we'll put it in, um, um, doctors' offices. And also, um, Ms. Smith, Katina, has been working with, um, Early West and, um, Hudson Dockett, um, with, um, we go there, over there when they have their family date and give those out because, uh, we wanna make sure that those students are not, um, coming in at age of five, um, and not, without any services. So we're hoping that the parents see these forms with our posters as well. And again, at March, with his, um, Texo, did that flyer as well. And, um, hopefully they see those colors and they see all of that and they read it and say, hey, my child is not doing this at three months or six months or nine months. And then they know that they can come to us and get that, get that evaluation and start getting their services when they get there. That'll work.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Deanna Folsom.
Ms. Folsom is our, um, support services coordinator. And today her report is going to be on support services, but her focus will be on homelessness.
Hello, everybody. Um, as you said, my name's Deanna Folsom. I'm the social coordinator and homeless liaison for the district. Um, Dr. Kason asked me to do this. He knows I love to talk about social work, but I'll have to focus on just homelessness this night. So I've got several handouts for you. Um, I just tried to hit the highlights. First, you have just a breakdown of our homeless children and youth and unaccompanied youth. And I'll explain the difference of that in a minute over the past three years. Then I have a breakdown as of November eighth. It's broken down by schools, whether or not they're doubled up and, or in a hotel or in our shelters. Next, for those of, those of you who aren't very familiar with the whole, um, premise behind the McKinney-Vento Act, I just put a little bit of our McKinney-Vento one oh one overview information in there. This is from the D I, DOE. But I'll just give you kind of a, a summary of exactly what it means. After that, you have, uh, I have an article here on the mobility rate for twenty twenty-one. Valdosta, Georgia used to be the, have the fourth highest mobility rate, um, in the state of Georgia among our students. And now we're number three. Um, we found that interesting. Part of it's probably because it's next to the interstate, but we have kids coming in and out all the time. We have kids in our district now that have been in five different schools just this school year. Um, and that may be coming from other counties and districts in the state. But basically McKinney-Vento is an act that came about so that children that are not housed, um, would have access to the same comparable services that house students do. In other words, if, um, let's say, just for example, we get a student that comes in and they are homeless, they're living in a shelter or doubled up or in a hotel, um, they would still have all the services. We would be able to provide them, of course, we do free lunch. We provide them school supplies. Um, all of our department, which I want to enter to sort of department, of course, um, we serve our homelessness now. We don't have a case manager per se that just serves the homeless in the district. We all serve our own at each school. And I was telling Dr. Kason the other day, I kinda like it because now sometimes these families will have three social workers at their door. And so we're kinda saturating them with services. I had one the other day, she was like, another lady came the other day. I'm like, okay, well, this is for this kid. So it's kind of been a way to kinda saturate them. Um, but we have in our department, um, we have wonderful social workers. We've added to our department as of the year. We've got Ms. Lan Kason, who is assigned to New Bern. And she's had some very interesting cases this year. We talk all the time. I'll talk daily with the social workers and it never fails, we always have those situations that have never happened before. And I, sometimes I get on the phone to other social workers in the state and I say, what would you do? Has this ever happened to you before? Um, we get new and more challenging situations in our district every day. Uh, we have Ms. Tisha Larkins, who is assigned to Valdosta High School. She worked with her homeless there and she has a lot of unaccompanied youth. And what that basically means is a student who's not in the company of a parent. We have some staff that think that, oh, well, they're, you know, they're just, their mom just went to jail temporarily. If they're staying with the neighbor, if they're staying with somebody besides their parents, they are considered unaccompanied youth. And we still provide those services to them. Um, so she has a lot of those there. Where's everybody? Okay, we have Ms. Samantha up here and she is serving LOMAX and SL Mason. She's had a really busy year. And I wanna point out that most of the hotels that pay by the weeks are in SL Mason zone. There's some that, well, SL Mason, Valdosta Middle. Then we have Ms. Mack, Tamara Mack. She has been very busy with her homeless. We've been discussing a lot of those today. Um, she is at Valdosta Middle and HLC. I wanna give a couple of examples. She has a situation now, um, where a woman was, uh, she was scammed. Basically, she sent in her first month's rent and her deposit and it was a scam. He had put an ad, put his name or address or somehow on an ad. So she lost her first month's deposit and her first month's rent and had to file a police report. She's here, but she's living in a storage unit and had to buy a, a gas, um, stove. We're working on getting her assistance, getting her into a hotel. Um, but that's just one example. Um, this, and we have, who am I missing? Ms. Heiser, Colleen Heiser. She is with DG Hun. She doesn't have quite as many homeless, but she served for the past, how many years? Eight, five years? Okay, as our, um, case manager for, for homeless students. I wanted her to, to speak to any questions you may have about specific services. But, um, we're just trying to give you just a summary of it. Um, some of the, you, you see the statistics that we have. And I wanna point out that I've told Dr. Kason, we have probably close to almost double the students that we had this time last year that are homeless. Um, part of that is because the social workers are in the schools. We're identifying the students. Um, that's something that we really try to push. We do training for all the staff. Um, several times a year, we're doing training with the different agencies. Uh, we toured the homeless shelters. And if you haven't done that, I recommend it. It's a very humbling experience. We have lots of students over there. Um, we get to see, you know, walk in the different rooms. Sometimes they have like two families to a room. Um, but we're trying to educate our community because what I've found is when you do talk to people in the community, they wanna say, oh, gosh, that's terrible. I don't wanna hear it. But they need to hear it. When you ask people, what is homelessness in Valdosta? They say, oh, those people living under the bridges or the people talking to themselves on the sidewalks or holding, or work for food signs. So many of those people have kids back at the hotel or the motel. They have kids that are doubled up. They have kids at the shelter. A lot of those people, because the shelter has a, has a daytime perpuy where they have to be out of the shelter looking for jobs. So there, a lot of those people are out on the corners holding up those signs. So what we try to do is get those kids in, um, get them in with no delays. And I will say some of the barriers is on the next section. We do have some pushback from schools. We have some schools that, you know, they have a child that's a disruption or, you know, they, um, they weren't sure if they were doubled up. Sometimes the parents don't wanna tell you when they're in a hotel. Um, but we tell the teachers, you know, as far as identifying, look for things like room numbers. Um, we give them the certain addresses of shelters so that they know that they, they, um, need to report those. Some of the other barriers we have are, you know, when kids get here, they don't have a copy of their certificates. If you think about it, a lot of their documents get lost in the moods. Um, we had one family here that the hotel, the motel, um, locked their room because mom couldn't pay all of her documents. Everything she had for that kid was in that hotel room. We were able to, to work with that hotel to get that access to those items. But, um, other barriers we have, like I said, is resources. Um, we, our children, especially the elementary, they need uniforms, um, clothing, school supplies. And we try to provide all that to them. More importantly is that direct service, that, that one-on-one contact with these families, go into the, where they are, um, and meeting with them. Today, for example, we had a family come in. Literally, Dr. Mace came and got me. They said, we have nowhere to live. Two small children, one of them didn't have any shoes on. And our Sabrina Smith put on a different hat and went in the lobby and sat on the floor with the kids while I went there with mom to try to get her connected to services. So they're coming in every single day. Um, like I said, you can look at these, these numbers, but I wanted to offer the opportunity to any other social workers that wanna speak up about any specific things going on in their school with the homeless. Like I said, we've seen, we've seen an increase district-wide.
Ms. Folsom, if you will, if you'll look at your document, it says homeless and unaccompanied youth as of November eighth, twenty twenty-two. Can you explain, um, the different bullets so that board members will understand what those are, please?
Okay. Um, unaccompanied youth, as I said, is, is a child that's not in the company of a parent. We have a lot of those at the high school that are couch surfing. Um, they're living with a neighbor, they're living with a friend. And the misconception is, well, he didn't wanna obey the rules. Um, he's not unaccompanied. Yes, he is. He or she is. Does it matter why they're, they're not with a parent? They break the rules, they ran away, whatever, they're still an unaccompanied youth. So that is what those are. The nighttime residence shelters is lamp, um, Horizon Shelter. And, um, we have some that go to Haven. There's a domestic violence situation. Hotels and motels, those are paid by the week. And I will tell you that I've gone personally since, over the past two months to, there's thirty-four hotels in Valdosta, hotels and motels. And I've gone personally to most of those, taken with the social work interns. We have a bachelor's level and a master's level intern this year, which has been great because they've been able to accompany them on different days, um, to these hotels and motels that are paid by the week. If you don't, if you aren't familiar with them, most of these are not Hampton Inn. They are paid by the week because these people cannot afford first month's rent, deposits, deposit on the electricity, on the water, things like that. They can't, they can't afford that. Um, unfortunately, a lot of these places, we've gone to them, we've given them the whole spill. I've given them, um, you know, information, what to look for, what signs to look for. Some of them just didn't wanna buy in. They just want their cash for paid by the week. Um, we had some that showed a little bit more compassion, but we had one that actually said they were putting all king-sized beds in their facility because they didn't want children there, which was heartbreaking because, you know, these, these kids land in Valdosta every single day. We get homeless kids, new ones, almost every single day. So, but we put posters up at these hotels and motels. We've gone to the Hampton Inns. We've gone to the nicer ones. Um, we actually have one hotel that offered us a voucher for two nights. Um, but none of the others were willing to do that. Um, some of the paid by the weeks, like I said, they'll only take cash, so. And it's concerning because as hard as it is to hear this, you know who lives at these paid by the weeks? There's lots of child molesters there, um, lots of criminal activity around these places. I don't know if you've ever been to them, but it's, it's pretty rough. And the majority of them are on West Hill Avenue. So right by the interstate. The only good thing about that is a lot of them walk to their little jobs at Wendy's, Crystal. Um, there's a lot of restaurants and things around that area where they can get jobs. Um, doubled up, this is kind of a, this is kind of a tricky one. If you have a family that comes in and they're saying, we've decided to move in with my sister. They've just got a bigger house. You know, we, we're just not ready to, to build or buy right now or rent. That's not necessarily homeless. That's not necessarily doubled up. It has to be for economic reasons, such as addiction, um, you know, a natural disaster. We had a lot of people that came up from the different hurricanes, um, had the clothes on their backs and moved in with family. So, but that's the difference between those. Um, any other questions? About the population that we serve? I, I'm willing to answer any questions you have, so.
If you, if you were to think about the, what we have expended on our homeless students over the last three years, what would be a number, a dollar figure that you, you would share with the board?
Well, the grant has ranged, the, the McKinney-Vento grant has ranged over the past, like, eight years, from anywhere from twenty-nine thousand to sixty thousand. And that typically goes for our case manager and benefits, salary and benefits for the case managers that we've had. And what's been left, we've used for uniforms. And what's been left, we've used for uniforms and supplies. So we've never had a large amount of money towards that.
And currently this year, however, we have received, uh, a, a federal grant, the SRT3, which Mr. Segal Yard, what you'll see is the reason why you see it looks like on that budget sheet that Dr. Hudson showed you, a negative is because the grant has not been approved as revenue yet. And so we've expended monies that will be charged to that, that homeless grant of about $129,000.
Yes, it's, and it's over the next, it's over three years. So we have the budget, if you want to see that budget where we budgeted, divided it by three, basically.
Okay.
So, yes. You know, we're going to buy things, hopefully, like, we're trying to get kids access for eyeglasses. We've moved into dentist offices and doctor's offices to try to get vouchers for free cleanings and free eye exams. And again, we're not getting the best buy-in from that. We're trying really hard, but people not only don't want to take the, you know, the insurance, they're backed up. Um, people are booked out for months. My own dentist, I asked, and he said that he would love to take one or two here and there, but he's booked all the way up into the, the spring. So, but we can buy caps and gowns, we can buy, um, I had a child who wanted to go to a band, um, field trip at one of our schools and I called the DOE, my, my contact up there, and yes, that, that we can do that. We had to get it approved through them, but that's what I mean when I talk about comparable services for these kids. You know, typically he wouldn't, ordinarily, he would not be able to go on a band trip. I tried to squeeze in yearbooks, but they would not, the DOE would not allow us to do that. Um, I feel like we have kids that should have those, but we're going to be able to order caps and gowns. I'm working with, um, uh, what's the name of, Kirk Jones?
Kirk Jones.
Yes, working with them, already talked to them, they're going to get us 20 upfront so that these kids will have caps and gowns. So we're trying to make sure, especially our seniors, they have access to the pass bag, we're working with them, you know, one-on-one with that. There's so many more opportunities if a student is homeless or unaccompanied. I mean, they, they look at that on being college applications and the pass bag. But didn't want to talk about such a depressing topic, but it's just a reality. And like I said, I could tell you so many more stories. People probably get tired of us telling you stories, but it's, you know, it's just a reality and it's, it's, it's growing. And it's only a small part of what we do as social workers. We work with the house that are dealing with just as many issues. Trauma, you know, still the mobility, um, poverty, it's, it's just, after COVID, it's just really, it's gotten... We, we need our social workers, so, so we really appreciate our social workers.
I do have a question. So just for clarity, you are stating that we are currently paying hotel and motel fees for our children?
We're really not set up for that at this point. Um, we, we work with the partnership to end homelessness. We have churches that assist us. DFAX, people think we do DFAX referrals based on malt treatment, we don't always. We do that based on the fact that they can give them su- support, they can find places for them to stay. They already have, you know, um, a MOU with these different places. We work with the homeless shelter, like I said, on a daily basis.
But, but what she did say is that we have gone to hotels and asking those hotels if they would accept vouchers and many of them said no.
I had one hotel that said, ma'am, he walked around from behind the counter and he said, I appreciate you being here. He said, but I have to run homeless people out of my kitchen, out of my breakfast area every morning. And he said, my paying clients off by 75, get tired of them walking up stealing cigarette butts out of the, the trash can. And here's me looking at them going, still, these people, you know? Um, and I have one hotel that was also a nice hotel and she did, she went and got, wrote us out a two-day voucher, um, for an emergency. So that's, we do have, like I said, different agencies that are already set up with hotels, but it's, the pay by the week wouldn't even consider it. They wanted cash. And then if they ask for a credit card, then you've got to think of the liability there, so.
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Good job, thank you.
So what will we do now that, um, the homeless coalition has actually lost funding for their hotel and motel fees that they used to pay for homeless individuals here? You know, what will we do for our children, Valosta City Schools children?
Well, that's something that I would like to discuss at some point. Um, I do know that the partnership did pay a week today at Intone Swedes for one of our families. The, the financial part of it, I've, of course discussed with Dr. Casey, it's kind of a nightmare just because you've got to, you've got the liability. Um, there, there are agencies, I do know this from talking to other social workers in other areas. Uh, well, for example, Ashburn, Ashburn doesn't even have any shelters. I was talking to that social worker and she said it's just a nightmare. But there's, there's agencies, um, specifically designed to help the homelessness that they have more of a, I, I guess you could say a financial setup to, to, or MOUs with the hotels. I know one district has an MOU with two hotels that they do a check at the end of the month. But it's been difficult. I've been on the phone with the mayor's office about Uber vouchers, getting kids to schools to, to, you know, we take their enrollment packets and stuff and people don't want to do it. They want, you know, they want to check immediately. We've been fortunate enough this year, we have our uniform fund with the foundation and that I can, y'all can agree with me, right? Social workers, that has been a godsend, has it not? No, the, the debit cards.
Oh, yes.
We have the debit cards, therefore we don't have to wait so purchasing to do the, to do the check request. What we do is we have debit cards, it's just from our small, tiny budget for uniforms and clothing. And Ms. Steedlin went and purchased those at, with our foundation money at the credit union. And what we do is we have a Google Sheet, we've done, we've already used most of it this year. We have homeless kids or, or kids that aren't homeless come in. Um, we meet the parents, we have them meet us there or we go purchase the items. We have the receipt, we put the items in, we do a summary, we put it in the Google Sheet, you know, just for, uh, purposes of showing that accounting for the foundation, but that's been great. I mean, the other day, Ms. Mack came in, she was like, this child has no shoes, this child has no, not one pair of jeans. She was able to go meet the parents at Ross, get the stuff right away. Same with, uh, Ms. Casey was able to take, meet a parent at the health department and get their birth certificate, $25. Um, we were able to use those for that. So we're hoping to be able to do a little bit more of that. Because it's never an urgent, it's, it's always an urgent, it's not like we can wait. I mean, we get calls, just like this afternoon, kid had no shoes. Luckily, we had some uniforms and we were able to get those for them and they're starting at SL Mason first thing tomorrow. So.
I would, um, I would just like to add, in addition to, um, the question that Ms. Brown had as far as the housing. Um, we, as social workers, we always like to reach out to community resources to solicit funding to help support those families because of course, as she stated, the grant does not allow us to pay for housing or hotels or things to that nature. However, there's a lot of different organizations within the community that have exhausted their funding. You know, as, um, the one that you were speaking about. However, um, well, that leaves us being stuck, you know, with not having any way to pay for the families to have nighttime housing or even permanent housing to that matter. So that is something that we as social workers are looking for, looking for some type of agency, some type of funding that can support us in an ongoing manner to be able to provide, um, housing for families. The hotels, a lot of them are deplorable, to be honest. And I mean, I'm working with a family right now, a family of six in one bedroom and they're paying a thousand fifty dollars a month. And half of that hotel is burned down to the ground. So that is something, that is very concerning to me. And when I reach out to, you know, community organizations and they don't have money or funding to help support that family, then we're trying to reach out to family members to see if they can stay with them for a few days until we can locate some funding. Because as a school system, I think that is one of our greatest barriers when working with students, um, that are homeless. We need better support with housing and long-term housing, not just a quick fix. Because we're seeing that once it's a quick fix, next week, guess what? We're back to the same thing. They're, you know, homeless again or displaced. So it's a problem, it's a problem. It's not just about our city schools problem, it's a community problem.
It is.
Because we just don't have funding available for, for housing. And the need is growing significantly every day. And I think every last one of us sees that. So if we could get some support with that, I mean, we would greatly appreciate it because we need our children to be stable. We need them to be in schools so that we know that they'll be safe, safer. And, you know, gain that educational benefit that they truly deserve.
Thank you.
And, and what she was saying, the hotels and motels are difficult. They want a credit card to attach to. She tried to pay for a family with one of our debit cards, DVA, and they wouldn't take it. You know, I guess because events of those and things like that. And as social workers and homeless liaisons, when we all get together, talk about the fact that this is the homeless grant, but we can't pay for anything to do with housing, you know? Historically, we have not been able to. We've been able to get them school supplies, Chromebooks, you know, things like that, but it's just been, you know, it's been difficult. That's why we've enjoyed using the debit cards, which is just from our little foundation account, but it has saved a lot of families. And Kicks for Cats, I have to give shout out to them because they've been able to provide shoes for kids anytime we need them. Which they will hopefully in the morning because this child had no shoes today on his feet. He was literally barefoot. So, and that's what I'm saying, you cringe, I, I, this is, this is second nature to all of us. We've seen it for maybe 20 something years, but the community, they don't want to hear it. They don't want to hear it or they look at you and say, oh, that's just so sad, somebody's got to take care of it. Yeah, shoot, you, you're a part of this community, you're a business owner. You need to report when you see these. The motels that I talked to the managers, some of them were compassionate, but a lot of them looked at me, one of them looked at us one day and said, I told my intern, I said, did I hear that all right? He said, oh, those people, this was in front of TJ Maxx, I'll go ahead and say it was Oyo, and hotel. And he said, um, those people sit out there and they make, and make $300 a day. Why should I care about them? And it just, it broke my heart. I said, because they have children. And he said, well, they're not there. I said, well, when they are there, you need to call me, here's my number, this is who you call. We had a couple of hotels that would not allow us to put posters up. And it has the state contact number and it has the local contact number on there. And it has all the information in Spanish and English. And, you know, some of those hotels, they just didn't want to hear it. Most of them just like getting that cash. I hate to say that, but.
Madam Chair, this is, uh, I appreciate what you all do and what you do. And we definitely need some time for assistance. I would, uh, like to see the, see the template, Dr. Casey, uh, check with other agency, other school systems and see, uh, what they are doing in regards to handling their homelessness in the area and bring that back to us and, uh, we will, we will go from there. I have some things in mind, but I won't say it this time, but we definitely need to do that research right away. If we can, Doc, see if we can have it no later than middle of December, if we can get it soon. I first beat it in December. If we can get it sooner, it'd be good.
I will.
But, uh, I think that'd be helpful for all of us, kind of see what other areas are doing, uh, school systems are doing to assist their children and their homelessness.
And I've asked a couple of liaisons that are doing it and they've done things like MOUs with two specific hotels. One district told me they use our district credit card and they have a, they have an agreement, um, with the COVID disclosure and all that. And it's, they have the parents have to sign something that says that.
That's where it can be done as well as like other districts.
Right, they have the parents had to sign something. I think one, um, girl told me that said that they would not be responsible for incidentals. It is, yeah, it'd be kind of a big thing to tackle, but.
It can be done. I'm sure it can be done.
Madam Chair, I have a question or a statement. Um, we say it's a, um, very difficult subject matter, uh, homelessness. Um, how many, do you have a number or you're willing to admit there's some, maybe some of our employees maybe homeless? Or maybe even sit, living in these, uh, hotels and paying by the week or the month? And, um, if so, what are we doing about that or can we do anything about that?
I was kind of hoping that question wouldn't come up because there's a lot, there are some and they are embarrassed. And we try to protect their integrity and respect their position because there's everything from, we've had nurses at the, the shelter. But yes, we do, we've had those employees in the past, also with other issues, mental health issues. And they're human too, all of our staff are human too, they've got the same issues as, as most people. So we do try to reach out to them, we try to respect their confidentiality, talk to them one-on-one, meet with them, not at school. We have had those situations, we have some right now. Um, we do the best we can. The only, the only difficult thing about that is that people are willing to help children more than they are willing to help adults. Not that, I mean, our coalition's been great and our local agencies are great serving, but the community in general, they're not so quick to, to assist the adults, so.
And, and of course, all the time, uh, Mr. Segal Yard and board, we, we're not informed because of the embarrassment, so to speak. But I did have a conversation with Pastor Mathis and his organization, he said to me, which I did not know, that they are helping many of our employees, not, I don't want to say many, but more than what I was expecting him to say. And so the thing that we can do, we have restrictions on our funding, of course. Uh, we can pay salaries, uh, for our adults and then we can, um, for our employees, but we have to get approval to do anything other than, than salaries, their bonuses or type supplements and those types of things, so.
But we do connect them to other agencies in the community. We try to connect them to, to food pantries, food banks, clothing, things like that, when we're made aware. But we have a lot of positive things in social services, it's not all sad. We all love what we do, which people think we're crazy sometimes, but it's, it's.
No, no, I said, we have to get that approved.
It's never a dull moment and, like I said, we love what we do. Just today with those kids sitting in the floor playing with our director's note, um, it was just, just, just melts your heart. These kids were smart as a web too.
Okay.
Madam Chair, as, as a former social worker, I miss you in my heart, so really, really appreciate what you all do.
Any more questions or comments?
Thank you, Ms. Folsom.
If you need any other statistics, let me know, I've got a ton of them. Our district state, I'm next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lewis and please make note that this is an action item.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'm here just to present, uh, the WGN fifth grade field trip. We want to take our kids, um, scheduled May 12th through 13th. Um, it's a trip scheduled for Atlanta. Um, I'm just read through, uh, it said this silent two-day trip to Atlanta provides students with a variety of fun and education activities to enhance the classroom curriculum to travel. So we're hoping that they can explore the, um, Zoo of Atlanta, so they can explore the 200 species of animals with the nation's largest world habitat. Um, also want us to experience, um, visit Georgia Aquarium, um, where we can give kids access to experience 10 million gallons of awe-inspiring wonders with more than 60 habitats. And on their last, that's the first day, May 12th, and the, the last trip would be the Coca-Cola, World of Coca-Cola. Um, just to give the kids just an idea of how Coca-Cola was founded and give them a, a background of that history. And then on May 13th, um, you know, with every trip, we want to give them experiences to enjoy themselves. So we want to take them to Six Flags of Georgia, um, just to give them the opportunity. We know, well, a lot of our kids probably are not privileged to go out of Valosta. So giving them that opportunity to go outside to experience things that they might not have experienced, um, we think is a positive. You know, emotional, um, uplifting thing for them to do. So we just asked them, uh, for approval for if we can get, uh, our parents involved with fundraisers, um, and just getting the ball rolling so we can give the parents the opportunity to go ahead and start making down payments for, um, the trip.
Any questions? This is an action item.
Do you have any idea of the number of students perhaps that may make this trip?
Um, so approximately, we have about, so we have about 160 fifth grade students now. You know, I'm thinking of, yeah, half or over half to go.
Is this the first time, this type of trip?
No, we didn't. Um, I've been here four years, we never did it since I've been here. They did it the year before, but I got here COVID here, so we haven't did it since then. So, but the first year, um, what's that, 2018, they did it and they, they said they had a... And they, they said they had approximately about sixty-five students there.
He's tried to make it, Mr. Bill has tried to make it an annual trip. But of course, of course, because of COVID, we had to stop, stop. But he's trying to, you know.
How many? If you've got sixty, sixty-five kids, how many chaperones are you looking at?
It's ten to one ratio. So for every ten kids, we have a chaperone. And we have eight fifth grade teachers, all of them going. And plus myself does administration.
If you don't know Mr. Lewis, he's the Assistant Principal of W G nine.
Closing that gate every morning.
All right. This is an action item.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. So it would only be the students, um, that the parents are able to pay.
Say that again.
Only the students where, as the parents are able to pay for them to participate in the trip.
Yeah, but we're going to, we're trying to do, we want all the kids. So we're going to try to do fundraisers so that we can possibly get the kids and parents who can't pay to also, um, go also. Now, do you have the total amount? Is it one hundred and thirty-five? It's three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Excuse me, Mr. Lewis. So that price may go up or down based on the number of students that are going?
No, it's thirty-three, thirty-five per, per student. It's just forty-five.
It's set based on forty-five?
Yeah, per bus.
Okay.
Does that cover all of their meals too? Or they're still out of pocket some?
That covers everything.
Everything.
Yeah. We go on Friday morning and we'll come back Saturday.
Okay.
So you're not asking for any funding from us, from the system?
No.
Just permission to build.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the W G nine trip to Atlanta as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, good job.
At this time, I'll turn over to Ms. Akila Blankensie. And this is information only.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to provide you some information about the Beta Club convention this year. It's January, well, next year, twenty twenty-three. It's January twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh. It's in Savannah. Um, we'll be staying at N B C seats in Savannah. Um, the purpose of the trip, of course, is for the convention. It's going to provide our students with an opportunity to showcase their skills and abilities in over thirty different categories. Um, including arts, creativity, critical thinking skills, and also leadership training. Um, but we're going to try to incorporate, um, some other academic activities while we're there outside of, um, the opportunities provided at the convention. And of course, it is an overnight trip. It's one night. Any questions?
What about how many students?
About sixteen to twenty is what we expect. We do have two hundred Beta Club students right now, which is an awesome number. Go Beta Club. But they're involved in so many different activities. And there are a lot of, um, sports that conflict with, with the conference. So we expect about sixteen to twenty students to participate.
And what's the price for you?
It's one hundred and fifty dollars. And fifty dollars of that is, they get right back. We, we have them pay the one fifty upfront. But when it's time for us to leave for the trip, we give them the fifty dollars to use for food for the time that they're there. Because food is expensive.
It is.
So we want to make sure they have enough funds. Um, so we go ahead and collect that upfront and then give it right back to them.
How many chaperones? Savannah's a, it could be a fun place.
There'll be two of us. Myself and Ms. Bennett, she's the other Beta Club sponsor.
Is this over electric?
Yes, sir, it is.
Transportation?
Yes. We'll need transportation.
School bus.
School bus, yes.
Any more comments, questions for Ms. Blankensie? Well, thank you.
Ms. Blankensie will ask you to come back in December for the approval.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
For the vote.
Okay, we don't have any public participation. So at this time, I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel, pending litigation, and real estate.
Second.
Second. All in favor? We are adjourned.
I would like to call back to order the Valdosta Board of Education regular meeting. At this time, I need a motion for the following: retirements, one school attrition assistant at Valdosta High School; resignations, one parapro at WG9; new hires, one science teacher at Newberg Middle School; one substitute bus driver at Transportation; one full-time custodian at Pineville Elementary School; one full-time custodian at Charles Mahone; rehires, one substitute bus driver at Transportation; promotions, one ELA academic coach at Newberg Middle School; one lead MTSS district coordinator at the Central Office. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, may we adopt the recommendations of the superintendent?
All in favor? At this time, do we have any board member comments?
Yes ma'am.
Or comments?
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
I'd like to make a presentation to Dr. Kason on behalf of the board tonight. It's easy to talk about someone when you've had a relationship with them and you know their heart. And so, I've had the opportunity to work with Dr. Kason for the past six, seven, eight years, and I know his heart. Valdosta City Schools has been in existence for over 100 years. Valdosta City Schools has worked. We've educated several children in this community. We've worked with several families. And over our 100 years, we've only had 10 superintendents. And Dr. Kason was named the 10th superintendent back on August 2015, and his tenure is coming to an end here in December. And so, tonight what we want to do is, we want to present Dr. Kason with his picture to go up on the wall with the other superintendents. And we want to thank him for the service that he has given to this district, to the boys and girls, to the teachers, to this community. And we want to let you know that you're going to be missed, but again, we know your heart. Dr. Kason started here in Valdosta City Schools as a teacher. And then, he progressed in his career, and he went other places, but he's come full circle back to be our superintendent. And so, once a cat, always a cat. And so, Dr. Kason, we just want to say thank you for your service, and we appreciate your leadership and your dedication over the years.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Then I had hair.
Already got it.
Take a picture first.
Wow, I wasn't expecting that. Okay, I'm good.
Do we have any other board member comments?
I do. Madam Chair, how many of you are going on the 15th to RESA so that we can...I've already sent a number of nine or 10 for our whole board training on the 15th. It's going to be at Adel.
Levens.
No, it's going to be at Cook County High School.
What day is that on?
The 15th, that's on a Tuesday. Tuesday, I believe.
A week from tonight.
I'm going to try. I'm going to try.
Okay, okay. Anyone carpooling, or we just want individual cars, just aside, text and make sure? Okay.
And it's a cook hot now, right?
Yes, yes.
It's auditorium.
It's auditorium, mhm.
Have a good meal up there.
Any more comments?
Last thing to the board. Thank you all so very much for entrusting the boys and girls of this school system to me and my team. As Dr. May said, you're only as good as your team. And to come into a superintendency with Dr. Hudson here, then blessed to have Mr. Clemens come onboard and Dr. Cole, and Mr. Loach, and others, is truly a blessing. And the district is in very good hands with Dr. Hudson and his team. And so, we are extremely proud to have been able to come and finish my career where I started. And so, thank you all for giving me that opportunity to do just that. And to my wife, I saw you, so I knew something was up. At this time, that's past your bedtime. So, thank you all so very much. Thank you. Thank you all so very much. Thank you.
Some good information also is at that meeting every year.
Reminders for the board members, the Wildcats will travel to Westlake High School and play the Lions in Atlanta Saturday, November the 12th. Kickoff is at 6:00 p.m. The whole board training at CPE RESA on November the 15th. BCS will be closed for Thanksgiving, November the 21st through 25th, 2022. At this time, may I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Our turn.